So, welcome. Today is November 6, 2023. It is now 5:00 PM. My name is John Lake, Supervisor with DEM Marine Fisheries. I'm here tonight to officiate this hearing regarding proposed amendments to Rhode Island Fisheries Regulations on behalf of the EM Director Terry Gray. With me from the division are Nicole Costa and Julia Livermore. Tonight's hearing concerns several proposed amendments which were publicly noticed on October 20th, 2023 pursuant to procedure procedural requirements of the Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42-35 Administrative Procedures, and the Office of the Rhode Island Secretary of State under the authority of Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42-17.1. The purpose of this hearing is to afford interesting interested parties an opportunity to provide oral testimony, data, opinions, and/or arguments concerning the proposed rulemaking. Please be advised, this hearing is being recorded and will be made available in the division's webpage tomorrow. Tonight's hearing, for tonight's hearing, the process of the following process will be observed. The division will provide a PowerPoint presentation summarizing each of the main proposals. Persons wishing to speak must raise their hand and be recognized by the hearing officer prior to speaking. Speakers must first state their name and/or affiliation for the record. This hearing is not a forum for discussion, debating, arguing, or otherwise having any other dialogue. Any questions must be limited to clarifying questions only. A second comment may only be made after all other speakers have had the opportunity to speak. Once oral comments are complete, the hearing will conclude. And just, folks, we are doing a hybrid style here, so we have people in person and online. We always go to the folks in the audience first, and then we go to online, and then we'll open it up to anyone. Written comments are strongly encouraged and may be submitted until the end of the noticed comment period, which is Wednesday, November 22nd. Division staff are available to answer questions regarding any of the proposals. So feel free to reach out if you have any questions to us offline. You still have plenty of time to make your comments. The record of this public hearing and comments will be provided to the Rhode Island Marine Fisheries Council for consideration at their meeting on December 4th, at which time the council will provide a recommendation to the director on each item. After the comment period is closed, the council meeting has, and the council meeting has taken place, the director will render his, his final decisions. The director has the option to file the rules and regulations with the Secretary of State as noticed, file the rules and regulations with minor changes, or not file the rule and consider renoticing with or without additional amendments. If filed, these rules and regulations become effective 20 days after filing and have the effective lock. Prior to, prior to hearing comments, the following exhibit are noted for the record. Exhibit one is a copy of the public notices and proposed regulations that were filed with Secretary of State on October 20th. Exhibit two is a copy of the slides for tonight's meeting. And as of, as of this afternoon, we had received no written comments at this time. So, without further ado, we shall get to the slides. All right, next slide. So, once again, this is a virtual and in-person meeting. If you are online, you'll be muted throughout, muted throughout the meeting. If you want to make a comment, please use the raise hand function in your Zoom webinar. We will unmute you then and have you make your comments, after which you'll be remuted. So, the first item up for comment is part of our Part III regulations. It's 2024 Commercial Scup Management. So, what we have on the screen here is our current scup commercial management regime. We have two proposals for scup. The first one is a division proposal. It would amend the starting possession limit for the general category, general category folks from unlimited to 10,000 pounds per vessel week. And then the second proposal is an industry proposal, which would, which is the same thing, except instead of starting at 10,000, this proposal would start the general category period on May 1st at 20,000 pounds per vessel week. Any comments on commercial scup management? Anybody? All right, no comments on scup management. Okay, the next, the next series of proposals have to do with black sea bass management. So, once again, this, these, on the screen, we have our current commercial spec, uh, current, current commercial management system with the changes proposed in each proposal. There are five proposals, uh, two of which, the four of which are kind of similar. So I'll go through the similar ones first, and then we'll hit the last one. So, the proposal one is an industry proposal. It would seek to amend the allocation. So, black sea bass is a quota species. We fish on a allocation granted to us from the federal managers. It would seek to amend the allocation for each period. As you see on the screen, it would leave winter one alone. It would increase the allocation for the May and June period to 35%. It would decrease the allocation for the July to August 15th period down to 20%. It would eliminate the September 16th to October 15th period and combine it into the period above, creating a period from August 16th to October 15th, which would receive 15% of the allocation. And then the, the winter two period, as we call it, October 16th and the 31st of December would remain unchanged with 10% of the allocation. Excellent. So, oh, sorry, and I should have highlighted, my bad. Should have highlighted that this, this proposal also would change the opening possession limit for the May 1st period from 100, from 50 to 100 pounds. So, the next proposal is very similar with the exception that instead of just changing the opening limit for the May period, it would up the opening limit for all of the summer periods, say, and the fall period to 100 pounds. Okay, the next proposal is an industry proposal as well. So, this proposal does not change any of the allocations for each of the periods. It only, it only would seek to change the opening possession limits for each period up to 100 for each of the summer periods and up to 200 for the fall periods. Excellent. The next proposal is very similar with the only exception that it would also seek to change the opening pound, the opening possession limit for the winter one period, January 1st to April 30th to 1,000 pounds. The only difference between the two. And the fifth proposal is, uh, so this one's a little, a little different than the last four. So, recognizing that, that Rhode Island is set to get an increase of quota allocation on black sea bass by roughly 25% or approximately, and these, these poundage have not been completely determined, but approximately 157,000 pounds. This proposal would leave the base allocations for each period the same, but it would distribute the additional pounds according to the scheme you see there in column four. So, any additional pounds, it would give 10% into the winter one period. 50% of the additional poundage would go into that May and June period. And then 10% of each, every other period would then get 10% of the additional pounds. So, we were able to look and see how this would affect the base allocations based on our preliminary numbers. And you can see there struck through. It would just change winter one, the May-June period and that July to August 15th period. It would increase the May and June period to 30% of the base, roughly 30% of the base allocation, decrease winter one down to 18%, and decrease that July and August sub-period down to 22. The other periods would remain the same. This proposal also wants to set the opening possession limit for May either at 75 or 100 pounds based on calculations that would get the period to go through without any closures. I can tell you, we do not have that projection right now. So, let me know. I can go back to any of the proposals. I know there's a lot of information here, but any comments on black sea bass commercial management?
Yes, John, thank you. Kendall, Commercial Rhode Reel. This proposal number five was not detailed like this earlier at the workshop. However, this is an interesting perspective, and I think the Commercial Rhode Reel Association would agree with this. This would appear to take care of concerns from a lot of small boat fishermen, state water fishermen, which the concern goes to the aggregate. And we see by the action of closing sea bass tomorrow, that it, there are haves and have-nots in this. It's understood, but don't know the determining factors which decide who gets what and why. Tough to word, but from this, I think we'd be in favor of this proposal with a trigger on the aggregate program at 70% of quotas, not 85, because if we can't monitor it close enough to make sure it doesn't run, because there are people, there are gear types that are going to be able to fish that aggregate. There are gear types that cannot. So, we're picking the winners and losers by gear type. And I think if we set it at 70%, people want to fish the aggregate, take advantage of it. And, but then it doesn't impact the ability of other people to have a fishing season, which is, which is what happened this year a little bit. So, we'd be in proposal, in favor of proposal number five with the condition that the aggregate program for sea bass is a five-day program, and the trigger for ending it is 70%. People have fished the aggregate, could then swing over and just fish daily limits, so there's nobody excluded.
Gotcha. And just to clarify, we did not have the amount of poundage that we were going to get, so we didn't get the better sound at the workshop, so.
No, it changed the perspective a little bit, sir. Thank you.
Sir. James Kaczynski, Wakefield, Rhode Island. I agree with the, you know, program of five, okay, as just described by the gentleman.
Thank you. Yes.
Jerry Trunley, Wakefield, Rhode Island Commercial Reef Association. I am in favor of proposal five as what, Ken Booth, with the aggregate.
Yes, sir.
James Kaczynski Jr., I'm in favor of proposal number five, the way it's outlined right there. I think it's really good for both segments of the fishing, the people who are out with the aggregate program and the Rhode Reels.
Mike Laney, now against it, and I'm in favor of proposal five.
Yes, sir.
Bill Allen, Jamestown. I'm in favor of proposal five, as long as that allocation goes into effect for 60, 70% for the aggregate. Five days a week.
Any other one?
We do have one person on Zoom. Brian, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Yeah, can we hear that, Nicole?
Yep.
Uh, yeah. Hey, good evening, everybody. Sorry, didn't have time to actually make it to the meeting in person. Um, could be in favor of several of these proposals. But from certain gear types, as I heard earlier before, very important through any of these proposals that we leave some percentage of our overall allocation for this winter one period, as we had just referred to it, between 1016 and 1231. There are users, you know, Rhode Island fishermen users that target the fish that time of year. Myself, obviously, being one, have purchased a federal permit to be able to, you know, land sea bass during that timeframe. When they migrate offshore, fish are usually much larger. That time of the year, those fish will work a lot more money. And it was a business decision from myself, and it's, you know, a percentage of my, my yearly income. So, dramatically, dramatically important, and other users, you know, I've kind of representing other people without, without them being here, but there's several people in my class that feel it's very important. We're going to miss those fish this year because of the way it was established, and unsure how we're going to overcome that, but for this upcoming season 24, it needs to be that way. Please.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go to David. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I support, as did Brian, number five. And, and I think the logic to this is pretty clear. I know a bunch of people have already testified on it, but the regulations that the division put in and the council put in place for 2023 basically worked, so this would bump some of the allocations up and slightly reduce them in, in other, other areas. The one thing that, that this proposal does not address is the closure that Brian just talked, talked about. And I think maybe the division could tweak the numbers of a for the period 5.1 through 6.30, slightly reduce that maybe by 10% and put an additional 10% in, into the period of 10.16 through 12.31. I don't, I don't fish at that time of year, but I just point out that discards, any discards during that period are going to get counted against us when they, when they do the quota calculations. At the current time, we lose 33% of our quota coastwide due to reductions due to discards. So, we don't want to keep increasing the discards. So, I think the division should have some flexibility to slightly modify those 20%. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go to Alex. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hey, so I'm Alex Perkins from Newport. I'm also in favor of number five. I do think it's important that we take advantage of getting that high price, hopefully in May and June. But I also think, you know, as David said, limiting the discards is very important, so I think number five is a good step there. You know, I struggle with the financial viability of the 50-pound limits. So, I know this is what we have, but I think even, you know, I see 75 and 100. I feel like starting at 100 there makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
All right, and next we'll go to Katie.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could, just so I could just get a quick recap, can you just quickly go through? Can I see one through four? Okay, one, and then can you go to two, three, four, then five again? Okay, I'm going to support proposal number four, please.
You mind saying your name and affiliation?
Yes, I'm sorry. Katie Almeida, The Town Doc.
Thank you, Katie.
Anyone else on Zoom?
All right, let's move on to the next one then. So, the next one is for 2024 Commercial Summer Flounder Management. You can see our current management scheme on the board there. There's only one proposal here. It's a division proposal to amend the starting possession limit for the summer period from 300 to 200 pounds. Any comments on Commercial Summer Flounder Management, Part III? Yeah.
Ken Booth, Commercial Rhode Reel. Would like to modify this proposal for the 5.1 to 9.15 period and drop it to 100 pounds a day. Unsure, 50 or 100 pounds a day. Unsure of whether the proposed 40 to 42% cut is taken into account in this poundage that will be able to maintain the season, particularly with an aggregate program supposedly starting. I don't see, with a cut of 40, 42%, these numbers won't allow us to fish the whole season. And again, it goes to the point of, of certain sectors being able to harvest and others will be boxed out. So, depending on where your calculations show, when you model it out, whether 50 or 100 pounds a day will allow it to carry through the summer season. And then the aggregate would be based, we'll get to that when the aggregate comes up, but based on the same poundage by day/week. I don't know how, nothing's been brought forth in the numbers to show how this would work, so at this point in time, you have to go with 50 pounds a day during that summer period.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. James Kaczynski Senior, Wakefield, Rhode Island. I am in favor of what Ken Booth just had said with 50 pounds, going to 50 pounds today. But I would like to see no aggregate program at all with fluke since you instituted the aggregate program, the fluke fishing has sucked. Okay, it's getting worse, worse every year. This year has been worse. Okay, and I think the aggregate program for fluke should be stopped until we can recover. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jerry Trunley, Wakefield, Rhode Island Commercial Reef Association. That's the thing. We don't know how much fish we're going to get. You know, cutting down 42% now.
38%.
38, oh, it's 38%, but still, at 200 pounds, if you start it at 50, you can, the next day, you can put it up to 100. The next day, you can grow to 300. But at least we know where we stand. But if you start low, it's easier to go up than it is to go down.
Thank you.
And the aggregate, that, that's terrible for us. Those fish are caught before they even reach the beach.
Yes, sir. Mike Laney, now against it. I'm just going to reiterate what Ken's proposal. And agree with that.
James Kaczynski Jr., I agree with the 50 pounds per day to start. I do like the idea of being able to move it up rather than down. And I also agree with having no aggregate program until we know what's been happening.
Anybody?
All right, first I'm going to go to Chad and ask you to unmute.
Yeah, hello, Chad Brayton with Fish and Vessel Kelsey and Morgan. I would definitely support proposal number one and would look for the aggregate, and, and I understand the concern of others talking about it. But it's, it's not, it's not an overfishing, overfishing thing because of the aggregate. Fishing, the fluke fishery has been, the, the fluke come in, but we don't catch them. It's nice to be able to, to have the limits when you can, but it's, it's not an overfishing problem that we have here, so I would definitely continue, continue to support the aggregate.
Thank you.
And next we'll go to Katie.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Katie Almeida, The Town Doc. We support the aggregate program. We're happy to see that back. It is efficient for us, and it also decreases discards, which is a huge part of that aggregate program. Regarding the 5.1 through 9.15 at the 200 pounds a day, we, we don't support, I understand the concern and wanting to start low. However, that doesn't necessarily bode well for us when it comes to the market, when we have a lot of fish coming in at the end because we suddenly raise the quota up towards the end. It floods the market, drops the price. That's not something that works for us. We would rather see if maybe the division can work the math out with the reductions that are coming. You said, was it 38, 37% cuts, did you say?
I understand, yes.
Okay, and when do you think we'll get the, is that the final, if you could remind me, is that the final number?
Uh, we're still, we still have to wait for the federal register to come out.
Okay, so that hasn't come up yet. I know there was going to be cuts, but I couldn't remember if that was the final number. So, and I don't know, I would think I would be more comfortable in waiting on this if it's possible to, until the FR comes out, and that way we can actually do the math to see what it would, the quota will actually be, and we can get something that allows the, the that season to continuously remain open at a steady rate, rather than a flood at the beginning or a flood at the end. That would work best for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, my understanding is that the council and the commission have already approved these specifications. We're just waiting on the federal register, so these numbers are near final.
Thank you. Anyone else for?
There was no discussion on the aggregate program?
No, that's just for the quota number.
Katie has her hand up again.
Could I? Let's finish online and then we'll come back to the audience.
Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to that. Okay, so the, these numbers right here take into account our decreases then?
Yes, that's why we are proposing to go down.
Okay, all right, then I, then I support the 200 pounds. Thank you.
Do you want to go, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment to, you know, to Katie, you know, from Town Doc, which I sell, my fish at Town Doc there. The only thing that floods the market is this aggregate program. When they come in, okay, you know, last year I found some fish. It was 50 miles away, okay, which is a long way for me to fish. But I found, you know, I was allowed 100 pounds a day. We were catching 90 pounds. Come back in, in the price of the fish because of the aggregate program, which they dumped all these fish, okay, was $2.50 a pound. Now, at 80 pounds, 90 pounds, you know, that's just enough to pay the fuel and the bait. Doesn't leave me anything. Okay, and it was all the aggregate program. After that point right there, I stopped fishing for fluke because I couldn't make any money. Okay, it was a losing battle every time I went because it was too far to catch the fish. There wasn't enough fish, and the market price was way down because the aggregate program was dumping all these fish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, let's speak again.
Sure, go ahead, Chad.
Yeah, so just going along in that line of thought, right now in Connecticut, they just went up to a 10,000 pounds for the week. Massachusetts has been 10,000 pounds a day. It's absolutely killing the market. And I'm, I work on fluke and skates, you know, almost every day. And we're getting 75 cents and 50 cents for, for fluke in Connecticut right now. I haven't landed in, in, in Massachusetts in quite some time. But it's because, it's because this isn't distributed evenly enough. I go along with Katie and what she's talking about. We're trying to spread things out. I, I, I want everyone to be able to make, make some money here somehow. But it's pretty pathetic to have all these huge numbers at the end of the year when the fluke are moving off to, you know, 50 fathom here now. It, it's just, it's, it's been, been mismanaged here for a while, so I, I hope we continue to go in the right direction.
Thank you, Chad. Right, oh, sorry.
One more on Zoom. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, this is Patrick Duckworth. Can you hear me?
We got you, Patrick.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's starting out at a higher number and working our way down. I mean, it's not, the aggregate's fault. The fishnet has been pretty sporadic and has been mismanaged, just like what Katie said. Start, start somewhere in the middle, but I hate how everyone keeps bringing up about the aggregate program flooding. But again, the aggregate program is an excellent program. It reduces discards, and it's just great. So, I don't know, everyone has a big thing against the aggregate. Aggregates are excellent for maybe not select user groups, but you don't have to be in it. You don't have to be in it. If you like to do a daily possession limit, you can do a daily possession limit. If you want to do a weekly possession limit, you do a weekly possession limit. It's your choice. Get a VMS, come in, and I'm sure you'll be happy about it because you don't, you don't have to worry. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
James Kaczynski, I'm just wondering, I don't really, I'm kind of newer to this, and I wonder if you could explain something to me how fish that are caught outside of Rhode Island waters count towards Rhode Island waters, but I can only fish inside of Rhode Island. And I can only fish within the three-mile limits of Rhode Island, but fish that are caught far outside of our waters are coming towards a quota that affects. are coming towards a quota that affects my being able to fish longer or at all in some cases. I don't know if anybody could explain, if you could explain that?
I mean, I can clarify real quick, so, um, I'll, when, any quota managed species, the pounds are taken from the state where the fish has landed, regardless of the waters that they're landed in. We do have permits that allow people to come in from federal waters and land fish. I will say, we're actually very restrictive on fluke compared to other states. We require residents be captaining the boat. Uh, their states don't require that. But we, uh, it's all based on the state it has landed in. So we are given an amount of fluke based on historical landings, and we've divvied it up into this allocation scheme historically. And it's, that's just how it came in historically, is my understanding, and that's how we fish on it now. Regardless of where the fish is actually caught, so. It is, you know, people should take into consideration disappearing times a year where the fish are. However, for our purposes, just where the fish are landed as far as the quotas.
Yeah, Al Eagles from Over Island, I had a question for you. If you've got a permit and you're fluke fishing, you can land them in different states, like Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts. You also need a permit for landing in those particular states?
Uh, states, uh, my understanding is all the states require some sort of landing permit like we do. Some are vessel specific, some are to the person, it all depends on the state. And we have been discussing offline, uh, all the ins and outs of these programs, so.
Are those permits open though? I mean, I think it's all.
Some are open, some are not. So, we, uh, we will always be reciprocal for any state that's reciprocal with us. However, with the fish like fluke, it can get a little complicated in that the permit can be very expensive, or there can be a lottery for it in another state. So it might not be as easy to obtain as it would be just to walk in.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the next one. So we have one more, one more thing with fluke, and then we are gonna get to the ag program. So, this is a proposal concerning our summer flounder exemption certificate. This is part fourteen. This is a division proposal, which would increase the maximum daily possession limit from two hundred to three hundred pounds for vessels that do not hold a summer flounder exemption certificate. So vessels with a summer flounder certificate can land more than two hundred pounds in Rhode Island. Vessels without, can only land up to two hundred pounds. The division is proposing increasing that amount to three hundred pounds for vessels without a certificate. Any comments, Ken?
Ken Booth, commercial rod reel. Have to be against this proposal at this point in time because of all, all the changes that are being proposed, which we have really no output of what it's gonna lead to. But this would allow people that did not fish the summer exemption to participate in the aggregate program, as I understand it, put extra effort on that summer period, or, or any of the periods, but that summer period in particular, when we're facing a quota cut. And the extra is gonna hammer us if the, if the numbers come through too high, so I think it's, it's important that the department model this out to show people how this is gonna work. Because we're gonna have the potential, if the fish are there, and I, I empathize with the guys, you're gonna catch them, you don't wanna leave them there. But if the fish are there and the aggregate program takes off with high numbers, the season will be closed halfway through the period. And while there are some sectors that can move on to other species, there are some that can't. And that's what's gonna, that's what's gonna hammer it. So at this point in time, I have to be against this until we see what the aggregate program looks like.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Just that I like to have a wait and see, and, you know. Uh, so we have some idea what's going on this summer with the, the cuts. Uh, again, they can change it anytime they want, but if you start at three hundred and it's tough to get it down again. Uh, John?
Hey, so just to clarify, um, this proposal is not necessarily saying that every sub-period is gonna start at three hundred pounds per vessel per day. This is just, the, the verbiage is that maximum allowable for, for a vessel without the exemption certificate will be three hundred. For example, right now it's two hundred, but some, some sub-periods we see it, you know, only at a hundred, but you have the option to raise it to two hundred without the exemption. That's the way the laws are written right now, correct?
So, to clarify, yes, that's correct, so.
This wouldn't necessarily be absolute management-free sub-period, this would just be an option if there were extra quota at the end of a period or something like that, they could raise it to three hundred and the, the boats without the certificate would be able to harvest up to three hundred, correct?
No, let, let, let me explain this again. So, so in Rhode Island, we have this thing called the Fluke Exemption Certificate. And it was established back in the late nineties. Uh, vessels that hold a fluke exemption certificate can land more than two hundred pounds in Rhode Island. Vessels without one currently can only land up to two hundred pounds, regardless of what the possession limits. The division is proposing to raise that limit to three hundred pounds. It doesn't matter period, time of year, this is just what that certificate allows the vessel to do. So an example would be, say the limit was five hundred pounds, if you did not have a fluke certificate, it doesn't matter, you can only come in with two hundred pounds. So that's what this is.
No, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that's, it's just saying that that is the maximum that you, we will be able to have without the certificate. You're not necessarily, the thing that these guys, and it would get, at, at first glance, it appears as though you're saying, no, every, we're gonna start fluke at three hundred pounds a day for everybody, which is probably not what the, the department's prerogative is always gonna be, and it's probably still gonna start at a hundred or two hundred, and then it can go to three hundred before you need exemption is what this option will allow, correct?
Um, we, we could start it at five hundred if we wanted. This is just increasing the amount a non-cert holder could have. Now certainly, we would take that into our calculations, but that, that's all this is. This is not a, there's nothing to do with starting moments or anything.
That'll be said, I mean, it was going on the record, I'd support that.
Support, thank you.
Uh, James Kaczynski Senior, Wakefield, Rhode Island, commercial fisherman. Uh, I am against this program and I agree with Kenny Booth that, uh, you know, it leaves it, especially since we're getting all these cuts, it leads into an overfishing, fishing situation this year. And next year, please invite me to test.
I'm gonna go with you, sir.
Right?
Yes.
Bill Allen, Minnesota, Rod James. I'm also against this call, Russell. Maylings because of the aggregate. The aggregate, for summer flounder, goes into a location this summer to destroy that quota, and will be done by the middle of July, if the aggregate goes through. Because you're talking, they want five or seven, and only answers fifteen hundred pounds. Because it's five days, and it's a lot more if it's seven days. I don't know how we can present a proposal like this without considering the aggregate. The big thing on this is for the summer flounder is the aggregate. You know, if you go with the aggregate, we're gonna be done in about two or three weeks.
Thank you. James?
Uh, James Kaczynski Junior, I'm also against it, I'd like to, to see it because of the aggregate program as well. Uh, but I'm wondering, how many boats actually have this? Do you know the numbers? When we're talking, like, how many boats have the flounder exemption? Because I think that makes a difference to what I'm thinking. If we're talking about three boats or thirty boats, there's a big difference.
So we have approximately ninety-seven of these certificates, about forty-five to fifty are used each year predominantly in the winter one period.
So in the winter one, and that's from?
Uh, January to April thirtieth.
Are all these boats aggregate boats or not?
Um, I'd have to look into it and we're not supposed to discuss.
Thank you.
Are these, uh, are these certificates still available? Are they closed?
They are not, they're currently closed. We are still in the phase where we are evaluating uh, whether or not and how to distribute more. And to be honest, it all hinges on the amount that they, uh, that they allow for and how it fits in with the aggregate program, which I promise is next.
I'm gonna go, I already heard you once again, so I'm hitting everyone else. I'd be a black rod, I'm a realist. I don't understand all of the nuances in the management thought process, perhaps as well as, as a lot of my temporarys do here. Just on a fundamental logical basis, I think, it seems to me that increasing limits, when we're looking at a forty percent reduction, just fly, fly in the face of fundamental logic. So, I, 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 needless to say, I am against this proposal. Thank you. Let's check online, Ken, just give him one, one shot.
We're gonna go to Patrick.
Yeah, uh, I think we should raise it up, and I think that they should, the summertime aggregate program that goes through, that number on that certificate is a very big, if you need a certificate to participate in the summer aggregate. I thought after all the workshops that we're at, that maybe you weren't gonna need a summer certificate in the summer. But, uh, I definitely would like to see it get raised to three hundred. There's a lot of, uh, times in the fall, people that do not have it, that are still fishing for fluke in state waters or close to shore, might not have one of these kits, and it can do, and it, and it really puts a burden on the people. I mean, uh, any boat that's a forty-five, fifty-foot boat, thirty-five-foot boat, that has a diesel engine in it, price of fuel at four twenty-five a day, burning a hundred gallons of fuel. And anything to get these summer fish is needed desperately. We're not talking about little twenty-foot center consoles, stock up the boats. I'm making ninety-nine percent of my income from fishing. I make ninety-nine percent, one hundred. I don't have a retirement, I don't have any. I have my boats. So if I need an extra hundred pounds, I think it needs to go up by an extra hundred pounds, and we need to have it or else, guess what, you're really gonna fall apart when all the fisheries collapse because they don't have markets because they can't sustain with little bits of fish. They need good-sized fish to keep these boats going. And the draggers that everyone keeps, snowball draggers, they don't know that it's the quota for the fishery. Don't get a quota. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're gonna go to Chad.
Yeah, hello, um, just to go back to, uh, man, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
Can you say your name for the record?
Uh, yeah, my name's Chad Brayton with the Fishing Vessel Kelsey and Morgan, but, so, John, when it comes back, when it comes to this, raising it from two to three hundred, the, the feds have it so that we can only have a hundred pounds with fine twine on anyhow, and, and that, that doesn't change. Like, even if you're just a state boat, you still have to have, uh, a five-and-a-half-inch mesh net at that time of year to have the three hundred pounds, is that correct?
That is correct. The small mesh rule, uh, is more restrictive than, uh, and, than, is more restrictive and therefore is the rule that you must follow if you have small mesh on board.
Right, so for, for many of my rod and reel friends that are there trying to understand some of this, the, the boats would just state permits that might be able to utilize that three hundred pounds a day. Most of the time, they're gonna be towing fine twine mesh, and they're only gonna be allowed a hundred anyhow, so this little increase isn't, isn't gonna work for them unless the price is really good. And then, then they might just go after their, their, their three hundred pounds a day for a little while, so it's not gonna have the adverse numbers that, that they're thinking. And this is the point that I lost, but the, the gentleman who was asking you about, how come federal fish is affecting what, what he's doing, and, and I understand that thought pattern. Um, but I hope that they all understand that it's the commercial fisheries, it's what me being a fifth-generation commercial fisherman has done, has brought these numbers in that they're able to fit into this little niche that they've created. If it wasn't for what we've done, you wouldn't have the poundage in this state. And we have also invested thousands and thousands of dollars in Massachusetts and Connecticut because our prime fishery is skate fishing, and we don't wanna go out and catch thirty, thirty barrels of skates and throw hundreds of pounds of fluke over, so. Because of that, we have to steam from one state to another to be able to catch the fish that we wanna do, to be able to do it without destroying the environment, so. I, I hope some people understand all of that, but I, I definitely wanna be put in for, you know, the few small state boats that might be able to use that three hundred pounds a day, they need it, I hope they get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, just clarification, John, gentleman in, in the front row, you brought it up on the third of the day. The concern, I don't begrudge anybody trying to make a living and make money. The problem is, how do we balance that, that taking away from somebody else? And is, if the interpretation is right, this removal, this move up to three hundred pounds would take a boat that doesn't have the summer exemption permit, but wanted to participate in the aggregate to be limited to three hundred a day?
It would limit them to, from two hundred to three hundred a day, correct?
Okay, so if the aggregate was a hundred pounds a day for five days a week, they'd have to go out two days to get their aggregate.
Correct.
Is, is the department model out what this would do for the season? If there's seventy participants in the aggregate program and everybody caught in two days a week, where that would take us through each period?
So the department has, and the division has considered, uh, the changes, I will say, it's a challenge as we were behind on fluke haul this year, and now we're facing reductions, so that's, that's difficult to model, so, but, but yes, it is a consideration.
Okay, I guess the concern is, again, not to begrudge the guys at, at the last speaker on the Zoom meeting, brought up a good point, not knocking that. But how do we protect the people that, that's gonna, if, if the department's calculations haven't worked, people are gonna get hurt, they're already gonna hurt this year, and it's gonna change the dynamics of the, of the fleet. Don't care about boat size. Everybody's gonna make a living.
Connor wants to say something?
Sure.
Hey there, John and Nicole, can you hear me okay?
We got you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I just, I wanted to just provide a quick response to Ken's. When we, through the pilot program, the reason we did it in such fashion was to gain information to actually project under various quota scenarios what it would look like. I think to John's part, point, the hard part has been predicting what effort's going to be, particularly for fleet or participants who primarily operate in the squid fishery and thus are held to a hundred pounds regardless. So that's been, that's made it really challenging, uh, to actually give a sense of what we were actually gonna look at. We can model worst-case scenarios, and we've done that, and that's, that's within many of the, um, and the documents we've provided to the council and as part of the hearing packages, but ultimately, much of it comes down to, you know, how do we expedite behavior to change? And so, in, in my, I guess, I guess the last clarifying point I would just say is that, you know, as of late, partic- I mean, particularly this past year, the, the aggregate program did not exist. Uh, it was daily possession limits based on the council and the director's decision last year. We have always, or for many, many years, have had aggregate in that winter period from January one through April thirtieth, or up till May one, but um, in terms of what's the current state of fluke been this year and what's driven market challenges this year. It's, there was no summer flounder, flounder aggregate program from May one through December thirty-one, so I just wanted to clarify that for folks who may be newer to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add a little bit to that, um, you know, also what Chad said and what Ken just said, I'll, I'll start with what Chad said first, I mean, that's it. That's something I didn't really even think of. I mean, the majority of the time, most of the smaller shore boats are gonna be fishing a fine twine net, which, which means, I mean, you, you're, you're not necess- necessarily limited to just a hundred pounds, but you can't, you, you can't have a hundred pounds on the boat and set the net again, so, you know, you might come in with, you might have ninety-nine pounds and then get whatever you get on your Mexico, and then that's it. Um, so I mean, to, to really actually use that three hundred for one of, you know, one of the smaller Um, so I mean, to to really actually use that three hundred for one of, you know, one of the smaller offshore boats. You have to be one of the boats that can carry two nets or somebody. Who's skate fishing and always has a a large mesh net on or somebody who's just gonna go out and target. Fluke and, you know, probably gonna miss all this squid and miss all everything else that they're probably gonna get, so I mean. That's worth taking into consideration and the consideration of what Ken was just saying, I mean, I I understand his concern that. You know, you don't wanna see high high limits end up steamrolling all the quota and then the fishery closes and then. You know, the guys that can do with a much smaller limit and still make their margins work wouldn't have access to that quota, right? Um, I just wanted to circle back and say this, this, this proposal is not necessarily saying that the. That the department is going to have fluke be three hundred pounds a day for everybody year round. Just say that's the maximum you can take. If the department so chose to raise the limit high enough that a vessel without a certificate could take three hundred. On a on a daily basis, if the department were to raise the limit that high, the possession limit were to go. Up to three hundred or beyond, we could keep three hundred without the certificate, but I would also. Argue that, I mean, if the department sees that, you know, the the fluke quota is being harvested rather quickly, doesn't look like it's gonna make it through the period. You guys are probably gonna step in and reduce the quota, you know, reduce the retention limit a little bit to try to get us. Through the period so that, you know, it doesn't close and it's. From the time I've been in the business, that seems to be the way that it always goes, unless we just have. So very little quota for that particular species, you know, like the striped bass or something like that, where it's just a. Bonanza for a couple of days and then it's gone or it's a hog fishery or or something like that, but I don't necessarily see that happening with the. With the flu, even with the federal reduction, I just don't see it happening, so I just to, you know, reiterate, I I think that. One, I I certainly support this proposal, but two, I don't think that. The people who seem to be concerned about it are, um, really. Were aware of how unapplicable it's really gonna be in the grand scheme of things. It's just my two cents on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, sir.
I'd like to address this small boat, big boat, you item there, uh. Not everybody can start off with a half a million dollars in a big net boat. When you start off fishing, okay, and you're young, okay, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-five. You're gonna start off with a small boat. You're gonna have a rod and reel, maybe some pots, okay, and you're gonna go out there. You're gonna hope you can catch enough fish so that you can make a living in that year. Hopefully, okay, the years, you make a little bit more, you put a little aside, and then you can buy a bigger boat. Okay, but we are stopping all of the young fishermen. When you eliminate, okay, the rod and reel fishermen, you stop. All the entry fishermen. You just can't do that, okay? You're gonna end up with an elite fishing. You know, fleet, okay? With nobody to pull for, okay? Where are you gonna get your future fishermen? They're gonna be young guys, rod and reel, pots, small boat, okay? And those are the guys that you wanna help get into the game of fishing, so that you have somebody to pull for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, uh, yes, sir.
How many votes have not been signed up for the summer aggregate from the flounder? Do you have any idea?
Um, I don't, but that's a good segue because we're ready to move on to the aggregate slides here, so. Okay, let's, uh, sorry, David, did you have a comment on the fluke exemption certificate?
Just say, I think fishing in general, but it applies here too. But we constantly are looking for, I mean, everybody would like to see more. Rate of pounds, uh, longer, longer subvarious. But it's also, I think, a truism that. Anybody that's in the fishery, no matter what size boat you're on. Uh, when we raise the allowable catch per day. Uh, and people are successful in, uh, reaching those quotas, the other quotas. The price goes to hell. And I I don't have a good suggestion for the solution to that, but, uh, everybody here. If they're honest, ha- has to recognize the fact. Or has to admit that they're basically this dynamic in the in the marketplace. Catch more fish, everybody catches more fish and the price goes down. So I think one of the powerful statements for, uh. DEM is to maintain economic viability of the various segments of of the fishery. But, uh, you don't have any control over retail pricing, market pricing. The the biggest controller of that number is, um, how many fish are coming in? You get you get a, um. A pile of fish coming in due to an increased voltage, uh, the price of an attack, so. But, uh, again, I I don't, I can't offer a solution to that problem, but. Ignoring the reality is that is, uh, probably the fishing equation, the economics, so it's. It's problematic.
Thank you. Yes.
Rick Lee. So again, you wanna go from two hundred pounds a day, which is currently in place, to three hundred a day.
For vessels without a fluke certification.
So to Dave's statement, if twenty boats get into it. And they can each get that hundred pounds a day. Then at the end of the, the end of that day, that's two thousand pounds more of fish. Has anybody studied the financial side of it? Which I think somebody should really go down and talk to the buyers and say. If you're getting ten thousand pounds of fluke or five thousand pounds a day and we can provide you with. Twenty to fifteen thousand pounds a day, what do you think that's gonna do to the market? And on Dave's perspective, I think what you're gonna see is you're gonna be catching three hundred pounds of fish. And make less money than what you made on the two hundred pounds fish. And that's very important, I mean, the statistics already show that. When you increase what the daily catch can be, whether it's fluke, sea bass, whatever species it is. That has already been reflected in the port of Galilee. I mean, if we go down and look at all the people that are buying fish, I think you're gonna find the statistics will be. Catch more fish, make less money. It's, it's like allowing guys to pot more fish. Put more pots out, more vapor, and more fuel, catch more fish, but the price has been reduced. So I I think before this should even be implemented, I think we need to look at the financial side. Of what it's gonna do. I realize the port of Galilee needs the catch. There's no question we need, uh, documentation that we're catching fish. But the key is, do we wanna catch fish and then get a dollar a pound for it? When maybe you were getting two to two fifty a pound for it. Doesn't make sense to clean something out. When you're not gonna financially benefit from. So that would be, that would be the first thing that I would be looking at.
Thank you. On Zoom.
We have one on Zoom. James, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, throw this out there about, I'm hearing guys talking about prices of fish, um. The amount of, uh, some flounder that's being landed in, uh, Point Judith Galilee is like minute compared to. The reflection of the price, like you have North Carolina opened at fifty thousand pounds and, uh, Virginia was like twenty-five thousand. If you're gonna increase a hundred pounds, our guy, it's gonna literally amount to a pistol in a snow pile. Compared to what them guys down south are doing. That's, uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Can you just say your name real quick, James?
Say that again?
Uh, can I just have your name for the record?
Yeah, it's James Leonard. I, uh, own and operate the Fishing Vessel Brianna James. Today, Dragger out of Point Judith.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, why don't we move on and now we can take comments on our summer-fall aggregate program, uh, part twenty-three, so. By way of background, we, uh, had this program for black sea bass and summer flounder as a pilot program for four years. Uh, last year it was a, just an opt-in program for black sea bass only. And it was based on a five-day fishing week, so you could keep an aggregate limit based on five times the daily limit for that week. Uh, participants are also required to have a state-approved VMS unit on their boat and must report electronically. So what we have here are changes, proposed changes to the program, like from both the division and from industry. It's important to, so we have, uh, five different proposals, but it's important to to note on this aggregate program that feel free to comment. On mix and match, if you like one aspect of the program, please, uh, feel free to say so. Or if you're opposed to one aspect of the program, feel free to say so, or if you're opposed to the whole program in general, feel free to say so. Uh, so there are a lot of moving parts here. I'm gonna go through them, uh, really quick. There are two slides. Be happy to go back and forth between slides. So proposal one, and once again, these are just proposed changes to the current program. So proposal one is a division proposal. The division proposes to add summer flounder to the authorized species list. For the summer and fall program, which is from May first to December thirty-first. And to have the weekly possession limit based on seven times the daily limit. Proposal two is an industry proposal. It concerns black sea bass in the program. It proposes to amend the weekly possession limit from one based on five times the daily possession limit. To one time based on seven times the daily possession limit. Proposal three is an industry proposal. It concerns adding summer flounder to the, uh, to the aggregate program. It would add summer flounder as an authorized species to the May to December period. It would not require a summer flounder exemption certificate to possess more than two hundred pounds. Instead, it would implement a summer flounder weekly possession limit scheme. Which would allow folks that had a summer flounder exemption certificate. To realize seven times the daily possession limit for for the week. If you do not have a summer flounder exemption certificate, you would be limited to five times, uh, a possession limit. Based on five times the daily possession limit. Uh, we have another proposal, proposal four from industry, also concerns adding summer flounder. It, uh, it would see summer flounder added as an authorized species to the summer-fall program, May to December. But it would modify the a- aggregate closure, so we do have a a aggregate. We do have a trigger to close all general aggregate programs, which, uh, is at eighty percent. This proposes to make that trigger eighty-five percent, so when eighty-five percent of the quota was reached as opposed to eighty. We would close the aggregate and go to daily fishing. Proposal five concerns, uh, black sea bass in the program. It proposes to increase the the possession limit to one based on seven times the daily limit up from five. It also would, uh, modify the general aggregate trigger from eighty to eighty-five. Um, so once again, these are all, we've already heard some comments on aggregate programs in general, so feel free to. You know, if you wanna state those again, or if we already have them, for the record, there's no need to restate them, but feel free. Uh, we'll go John first.
So I just had a, uh, clarification, um, I think when they first hashed out the aggregate program, that that just wasn't. Um, an item, but. Well, I understand that that the way that the summer flounder aggregate would work now is if you didn't have an exemption, you couldn't harvest full weekly aggregate limit anyways. Because you're technically violating that federal law or?
So so that's a good clarification. If, so the the fluke exemption is state rule. Uh, if, uh, as the program.
Does it supersede it though? Like, does aggregate supersede the the fluke exemption?
No, it does not. So if, so if, so the division proposal, uh, would would keep all the rules. For the summer flounder certificate in place, what that would mean, anyone can opt in to the summer flounder exemption. I'm sorry, anyone can opt in to the, uh, aggregate program. Uh, if luke were added and you do not hold a summer flounder certificate. You could fish, uh, currently, you could go out and get two hundred pounds a day until you hit your weekly. So say the limit was at five hundred pounds for the week, it would take you more than two days to go out and get that. You couldn't go out and get it all in one day because you do not hold the certificate.
All right.
We do have one proposal that would, uh, would would make the aggregate program actually supersede those rules. And put out a new possession.
And that proposal is proposal number three?
That's proposal number three.
Okay, I'd support that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on Zoom to Patrick. You there, Patrick?
Yeah, 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 you there?
Yeah.
We got you.
All right, I made proposal number three. I think it's a good proposal. It gives the guys who did spend money on a fluke exemption the extra two days. That they could, uh, go out and harvest the fish, they get two extra limits. A guy without one, he gets five days worth. And, uh, I'd like to see the sea bass go to seven days a week. Instead of the five and till the trigger hits and then we could go to the daily possession limit. I didn't see that on the proposal. That we had at that workshop. Is that, is that the one that says we're raising it to eighty-five, John?
Um, so that that was just a proposal received. We we actually had some talk about the triggers at the workshop. And then I think we got one, just a follow-up one to to increase that trigger to eighty-five up from eighty.
Okay, yeah, that that'd be the one that I'd go for. The seven days a week with the sea bass with the eighty-five percent trigger. That, uh, pilot will get shut down at eighty-five percent if it was that subperiod that was full. Well, I support, I support the one I made number three, number one. I'll support it if you did not need an aggregate, if you could participate without an aggregate certificate. The summer aggregate program is really for the smaller boats. That the reason it worked so great the first time I was participating in it, I don't have a fluke exemption. And it just made it easy and more economical. You don't have to go out every day and burn fuel. If you catch fish for the day and they do a good, you can keep them until you get your limit. It's just smart. reduces discards and less carbon footprint going out fishing every, I don't have to go fishing every day. I can go every other day, or I can go one day for the week. It's just these aggregates need the, these aggregates are honestly the wave of the future and they just need a. They need to be done. I think all fisheries should be in aggregates. But I support number three and I support seven days a week on the sea bass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim Kozinski, um. I understand and I and I agree with reducing the carbon footprint. I like that. That's a great idea. I understand that everybody wants. To make money when they're out there fishing, um. One thing that I would see this if it had to go through, I don't I don't necessarily support the aggregate program, but I understand. Why that other people would, because we're all out there to work. And to try to get as much money as we can, if if any at all, but. In terms of the for the way I see fishing is that I really can't catch. Luke after, say, August fifteenth, they're they're not really catching very many at all. I would see the aggregate program, if luke were added, starting after that, so I'm I'm not catching them at that point. And I would like to see it probably stay at five days, but I could see that being, because then the 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 small boat, the day dragger guys can 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 get it. And if I catch one, I catch one, but I'm not really much shifting my fishing then at that point.
Thank you. Good. Yeah, John, um. The concerns over the aggregate program are not, it's a good idea. I think from that perspective, however, what are the protections for the people that don't participate? And I would look at a a couple of things that it's time to start looking at it. We had the old sector allocation argument back. Twelve, fourteen years ago. Um, maybe it's time to look at gear types to what they traditionally caught. We can go back by gear type and look at the poundage that they caught annually. During the periods and and create an aggregate program for those people who want to fish the aggregate, but not stepping on other fishermen. Um, and I think that's very, that's very doable, because once this starts, it's it's gonna be very hard to go backwards on it. And there are people already affected this year by the people that that they can't participate in the sea bass program, potters, things like that, just the way the season went. Um, and to the point that was brought up earlier, you know, when you get twenty-five cents a pound for a sea bass. You know, a dollar fifty a pound for fluke. You know, a dollar fifty a pound for fluke is a tough one. But so if we looked at the, at the aggregate program, and I don't know, just trying to look at the time period where certain sector, uh, sectors can't fish. Um, put the triggers at seventy percent. We lost sea bass tomorrow. Because if it's, if, if it's, if it's a dealer reporting issue, if it's a tracking issue, lower that number so we don't step on everybody. People can fish the aggregate, they can benefit from it. Then if, if we have to, everybody can go to the daily limit. But we don't get that early closure in, in a shutdown because we can't track it. It's the first year we're doing it for, for Luke with the quota cut. I don't know how advantageous we want to get. But not against the aggregate program, just have to protect it so it doesn't hurt people. It can benefit people, but it shouldn't come at the expense of a lot of other people.
Thank you. Want to go to John? Actually, I've already heard from you. I'm going to go to Jack.
Jim Kozinski, Wakefield Commercial Fisherman. Uh, I disagree with the fact that one hope, okay, or one fisher would be different than another. If you want to do an aggregate program, everybody should be in the aggregate program. If you want to do just a regular commercial fishery, everybody should have the same rules and regulations. You shouldn't just put fifteen to twenty or twenty-five boats in a special class. In effect, where the other people can't fish or compete. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rick.
Okay. So again, there's, there's no question. I mean, anybody that's been on a dragger, worked on a dragger, the draggers themselves, the fishermen themselves. There's no question. They want to go out one or two days, catch all their fish and come home. And that's good for everybody, because if they're dragging every day, then the buy catch, what they're throwing over, everything that, you know, comes into that net on a five, seven day basis, isn't always going to hit the deck. So if they're only doing it for two days, that's much better for the fisheries. It's a catch twenty-two, no matter how you look at it. I mean, we all know that there's people that have been doing this their whole life. And from both sides of the coin, we're trying to save the fisheries. And again, we're trying to make Galley the best fishing port we possibly can. But I do agree with that gentleman. I don't know why we have to have a separate category for a certain group of boats to go into a aggregate program. I think if everybody was in an aggregate, there it is. And then you can really track it because everybody's on board and on the same page. And if you see the fish coming in, uh, you know, by great amounts, then maybe eighty-five percent isn't the number. Maybe it's seventy-five percent. And then you say, oh, we got to pull back on the reins here. And, and again, when we get to another fisheries, you'll see how that's happening. I mean, tomorrow, I mean, and as an example, sea bass closing down. We're not blaming anybody on that. But that should never happen. If we monitor everything right, based on the information that we have, based on everybody's data information in properly, then we should be able to have a species of fish to catch so that everybody that's in the fishing industry can at least make some kind of money. Right now is when guys start to starve a little bit. And I say that only because it's tough to move fish. The buyers will tell you right now, they're not moving a lot of fish. It's not like restaurants or those people are really going after it. Um, so again, I like the fact that put the net in the water one or two days, perfect. Three days, perfect. Seven days. We eventually got to get away from that. And again, it helps the fishermen themselves who do do that. Because again, the fuel cost, boat running. I mean, it's a big pie and we all have to take from that pie, but we all have to work together to make it work.
Thank you. Guess one on that, I'll, I'll get you.
Uh, we're going to go to Chad.
Yep, sorry, me again. Um, I, I do like the number three proposal, um. But I do have a, a fluke exemption, uh, but I still would consider it reasonable to bring that back down to five days on the, on the summer flounder, because uh, it, it, it can give some of us the benefit of, of getting a seven day work weekend with, with, um, my general, I, I don't work the weekends most of the time. But I do work seven days, I mean, five days a week, most all, you know, weather permitting, of course, in the summertime. And, and I do have the other, you know, this is just selfishly speaking on the other, other, uh, landing permits that I have with other states, which takes, takes longer time and more fuel to, to be able to do it, but it allows me to do the stuff that I need to do. But then for those, so, some of the gentlemen that are speaking about why, why there's different things with, with the aggregate, um, anyone who's involved with the aggregate, you have to buy the, the equipment so that the government can again monitor, monitor to you even more. Uh, our, us federally permitted boats have the VMS from that the government's watching all the time, but to be part of these aggregate programs, whether for black sea bass or, or for summer flounder, we have to buy a different unit that the govern, that, that the state has the ability to watch all the time. We have to pay a monthly subscription for that. And it has to be on seven days a week for the year that we participate in an aggregate program. So it gives them more data, but uh, some, some other people might not want to have to pay for that investment to be able to do that.
Thank you. Uh, Elliot, what's your question?
Uh, I just got a quick technical question for John. I went to a bunch of meetings in the past when we were talking about this aggregate. And could you explain to me what the rationale was? Having a VMS for the black sea bass aggregate program?
Sure. So, um, so as, as Chad just mentioned, many federal permits have a satellite VMS requirement. That, that data is not usable by fishery managers. We cannot see it. Um, so these low-cost cellular units that, that we are requiring, we can work with it. Uh, our enforcement can also see it as well. And, uh, it, uh, it's just basically that. We can actually work with that data. Uh, for the federal mona, VMS monitoring, you have to be a member of law enforcement and you have to get special permission. So for us to analyze, analyze the effectiveness of the tool and have ease of access to that data, that, that is what.
Yeah, but what is it actually being used for? I mean.
To determine when you're going to land, and if someone needs to meet you, they can be there. So.
You have a possession limit, the dealer's only going to buy a certain limit off you. The guys that don't have that are selling fish, you know, every day that they catch them. They're not being monitored by VMS. They sell them to the dealers, it's all being reported. Why is it required for the aggregate program? What makes that different? Well, you need that VMS in. To track people for what, for what reason? Why you? You, you say collect data, what data are you collecting with that?
So we can get effort data. I mean, just, just to clarify, I'm not going to go into nitty gritty, we have to talk, uh, after, but, uh, to, to be frank, it's a additional accountability measure. So these programs allow more flexibility, what you can bring, bring to shore. So it's basically so we can just make sure that, that everyone's being honest, to be honest.
And why not, not propose this, so they're dead against the book? Then why wouldn't it be required for everybody then commit to land fish? What do you, I, you're not tracking them.
Well, uh, this, this is new technology. It, it, uh, well, relatively new now. It's low cost. Uh, that wasn't available in the past and.
Well, who knows? I just want to state for the record, I think it's a huge invasion of people's privacy. And I was never far this in the beginning, and that's why I never even decided to go in that aggregate program. Just big brother all around. And I, I don't think it's necessary for that fishery to be in an aggregate program. That's my opinion. I mean, you're only allowed so many pounds for a fish a day, you can only sell to a licensed dealer. That's the system that's been in place for years. It's in a place, that system is in place now for the people that don't have the aggregate program, and it's working. So I, that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. What's going on?
Alright, we're going to go to Brian.
Uh, thank you again, Nicole. Um. I, I wrote so many questions during this time period. Let me just see, uh, real quick. Um, John, so the clarification for these subperiods. If if we ended up going to a seven day limit on the aggregate programs, uh, straight through on all species, with a trigger set at potentially that eighty-five percent, what, what are the penalties if that subperiod goes over? Uh, because of that higher trigger regulation, um, or potential regulation? Um, you know, if we end up shooting over by a certain percentage, will that come out of the next subperiod?
It would come out of the remaining subperiods, correct?
Uh, the, okay, uh, definition of the remaining subperiods or just the next subperiod?
It would be spread across the remaining subperiods.
Okay, alright, yep. Thank you for that clarification. Um. And now revisiting subperiods once again, uh, for the twenty twenty-three season that we are currently into. And as you've heard, many people allude, sea bass closing tomorrow. Um. Was there no winter one period established as a subperiod, uh, for two thousand twenty-three?
Um, that's right, follow for sea bass?
Yes, for sea bass. I apologize, yes.
Um, yeah, we, we, uh, we had our traditional winter one season this year for sure.
Um, alright, I, I, I could use, uh, so November, December, what, what season is that called again, please?
Uh, that's winter two. So we, we call winter two or, or the, the, uh.
Okay, alright, was there no subperiod established for winter two, November and December twenty twenty-three?
Um, so it was based on an October fifteenth open and, um. You know, I, not to turn this into a workshop, but, uh, but one fact that's important to note this year is last year, the state of Massachusetts gave us twenty-five thousand additional black sea bass pounds this time of year. That allowed us to carry through November. We did not get those pounds this year, and that's where we are right now, closing today.
Um, alright, yeah, and I apologize, uh, if these are workshop questions. So. Um. So what, in November and December for twenty twenty-three, what was the percentage of our overall state quota allocated to, to that winter two period? And, and why is it not left? Why was there nothing left? Um, for that period right now?
So for, uh, it's ten percent of the allocation and as we reached the, we reached the limit is why, why there's nothing left.
Alright, so we reached, we reached the yearly limit then, so all, all of our percentages have been caught.
That's correct.
Okay, so. So my confusion then about the aggregate, and again, you're saying, uh, an overage in a subperiod will establish a certain percentage of the rest of the remaining subperiods to be lowered.
Correct.
Okay, so. Um, so we need to, again, and I apologize, this is going back to a statement I made earlier, we need to figure out a way. Um. Either of a lower trigger, which I know people are not in fa- favor of, uh, a way to make sure this end of the season subperiod, uh, has some fish allocated to it. And I know, yeah, this is, I, I'm a completely in favor of an aggregate program. It is, it's, it's economic, you don't walk the docks anymore in here. Anybody who's against it, that's, you know, trying to establish a hundred percent of their income, you know, from commercial fishing. Um, uh, just trying to figure out a way to, to keep percentages, uh, throughout the entire year, as a gentleman was just referring to two speakers ago. So, um. Alright, I'm long-winded. I appreciate it. Thanks for the time again, John.
One more thing, can you just give your full name, please, Brian?
Oh, sorry, yeah, uh, Brian Tebow, Commercial Fisherman, Pointe, Rhode Island.
Thank you.
And Patrick, again, if you want.
Let's go John then.
Um. So, uh, circling back, I just want to say as an alternate, if the, um, department doesn't consider option three, which was my support as an alternate, I would support the, um, division proposal of option one. Also, I kind of just, I just really, it's more sort of workshop stuff, but I kind of just wanted to bounce back. It's when, I mean, I was involved at the very beginning of when the aggregate program was conceived and whatnot. Um, we had a gentleman back here, I believe it was, um, it was, uh, Ken who was concerned, um, you know, about sectors and, and quota management and, and, um, you know, maybe draggers and some of the potters and gillnetters eating up the quota, and then there not being enough left for, for like the rotten reel sector, which is. In my opinion, yes, I, I guess that's, that is a valid concern. I mean, I, I actually support Ken's, um, ideas on, you know, having sectors for the fisheries, just like, like Massachusetts does. The mobile gear guys and the gillnetters should have a you know, mass cap type license, where that's our quota, because whatever we're trying to manage, what the full scale, full-time commercial fishing operations are trying to do, um, we only see the butt heads and, I mean, you really never see it from our side when they're arguing about what kind of hooks, like you catch fish with or whatever, nobody ever complains on our end, but. Um, that's, I think that's for another meeting. However, there was a gentleman who had asked, um, well, how do we know how much fish is being harvested? How do we know that this is not going to adversely affect the quota? And it's built right into the program. There's no more transparent fishing operation than one that has the aggregate, because not only do they have a VMS tracking unit, they're required to report electronically on safest every single day before they even unload their boat. Their reports in before the dealer's report is even in. Most commercial fishermen, and I'm not going to lie, I mean, and, and anybody else in this room, you can feel free to chime in, but I usually don't even do most of my report till the end of the year. Uh, I, I know dealers that sometimes are backed up a month before they get their reports in. So there's really no more real-time data about what someone's catching and how it's affecting the quota than the guys who are participating in the aggregate. Because when I was fishing the aggregate, I was legally required to have my stuff recorded and on safest by the time the boat hit the dock. So I mean, that's, I want to throw that out there. Also, I, I support the aggregate for, for the, all the, um, environmental aspects of it. I mean, you're not burning as much fuel. If you got a leaky old boat, you're not pumping as much building stuff overboard. You're, you know, nowhere near as much of a carbon footprint and there's nowhere near as many discards. It's just, it, it's just all, all the way around is better. Um, but I, I thought that there are also gentlemen that were concerned about, you know, there, there's still only a limited amount of boats in the aggregate program. I mean, this was really supposed to be, as I recall, when we were bouncing these ideas back and forth, when we, at the conception of the aggregate program, the aggregate program was supposed to be a pilot to see if a management plan more like some of the other states that have aggregate programs, like the mass cap program and that stuff would work, you know, in Rhode Island. And I thought that that's kind of what we were moving towards. Are we still, you know, looking to move towards something like that where, you know, an aggregate program becomes a normal management practice for mobile gear fisheries or some of the bigger fishing operations, that we are beginning to separate um, the different types of operations and different types of permits and whatnot, or is this? Yeah, well, I, I just feel like it's worth talking about what the future of it's going to look like. But like I said, some of that's probably more of a workshop. Um, thing.
Most definitely. I will just clarify that it, it is here now. We, I mean, the pilot is done. Sea bass was an opt-in program. Anyone could join who met the criteria this year. Um, now we're discussing further regulations for it, uh. Adding summer flounders while they're around. Better.
Alright, Patrick.
Yeah, John, I just, uh, I know this is a public comment, but I'd like to, I'd like for you to tell everyone how many people actually opted in this year to the aggregate program, because anyone could do it. So all these people that think it was like a special program, there's certain boats that got in. Anyone could have signed up this year. Any person could have signed up. You just had to buy a VMS and you had to do electronic reporting before the vessel hit the dock. Anyone could get in, so it's no hidden secret, lucky Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, I got the magic bar, none of that going on. Anyone can get in. So. I mean, it would be, I don't, that's the problem that we have here. Is there's too many options. Oh, the daily limit, weekly limit. Just make it one weekly limit. Everyone has to participate, everyone has their weekly limit. And however you want to catch it, divide it up. Make everyone have a VMS, make everyone electronic report. Then you won't have everyone guessing. I mean, throwing stones at each other, then you could see it at one hundred percent. I mean, anyone could have got into it this year and people didn't. So maybe they could give some of their experiences, why they didn't get into it. That's what I'm more curious about. Why wouldn't you get into it? You know, that, that's the biggest thing that we're here. The aggregates, they're great. They just need to have, we need to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we also have Chad. Alright, and also have Chad. Go ahead, Chad.
Yeah, having a hard time unmuting, sorry. I I just wanted to throw this out there too, when it comes to, I, you know, this year there wasn't an aggregate. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I got a thing that came up on my screen. You you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, this year there wasn't an aggregate and, you know, I I I do a lot of rod and reeling myself with my family. At thirty-three egg harbor, go to Black Eye, all that stuff. I'm predominantly a commercial fisherman without a doubt, but. Um, the 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 people I follow with the rod and reel and and friends that do all that stuff, we 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 both had, the last two years have been awful. The year before, we did have a an aggregate program. Um, this year we did not. Um, I caught fluke, I I I, you know, out fifty fathom. I chased them in. We we had a really good April. I I had to go to Connecticut because Rhode Island didn't, they they were, they were at. Two hundred pounds at the end of April after the winter a- aggregate program. Uh, Connecticut was at a thousand pounds a day. Um. We did good all through there, so I, what, a- and now, now the fish are swimming off and we're doing good in the same spots where they were, where they swam in. Yeah, uh, you know, South Island, the ledge, all that stuff, the, they they've moved on since in the last two weeks, but. But we had it, we had ano- another couple of good months, but all through the summer, you you couldn't catch a fluke with a net or a pole. Um, it's not because of an aggregate program, it's because of something else. The fluke are still there, the biomass is there. They're just not acting like like they should for us to catch them. And and I think there's other reasons to look into that for for what that might be, and that's, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but. Um, I'm not a scientist or a bio- bi- biologist or anything like that, but I'm just telling you what I see. That I I tow a six-and-a-half-inch net, five days a week, catching bait and fluke. This is what I do. And and it was, it's been an awful two summers on fluke especially. Um, and there's other reasons for it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, so since there are no further comments to be presented at this time, on behalf of the Department of Environmental Management, I'd like to thank you all for attending and for your comments. At this time, I declare this public meeting to be closed. Again, please be reminded that the public comment.
We have one more.
Oh, jeez, thank you so much. I could have forget the non-substantial ones. So correct that last bit and let me finish here. So we do have one more slide up for comment and that is uh some housekeeping uh in part one. Definitions and general provisions. I encourage you to look at the annotated rules that were part of the uh public notice for specifics. But if anyone has and has any comments on our clarification to possession limit and vessel operating compliance. Clarifications to transiting as well as shellfish, shellfish marine life management area locations. Anyone on Zoom, I apologize. Thank you. So I'll start again. So since there are no further comments uh to be presented at this time, on behalf of the Department of Environmental Management, I would like to thank you all for attending. And for your comments. At this time, I declare this public hearing to be closed. Again, please be reminded that the public comment period will conclude at four P M on Wednesday, November twenty-second. And that division staff are available to discuss the proposed rules in order to assist you uh understanding them and uh to submit a written comment. Uh, so thank you. So, yep, a lot of, uh, I do agree, there are a lot of options, especially for the aggregate program. Feel free to reach out to any of us on staff if you want to get more questions answered uh to help you make a comment.